All right. Good evening, we are reconvening to open meeting. Item two point three, we'll take a roll call vote for declaration of subjects discussed in closed meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt, the certificate of closed meeting is written.
Do we have a second?
I second it.
And any discussion? There being none, Ms. Morgan, may we have a roll call vote?
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Diggs?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Ms. Gattie?
Yes. Item two point four, approval of personnel action, may I have a motion?
I believe that we approve the personnel action as written.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? There be none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item two point five, approval of twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six personnel appointments, may I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve a twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six personnel appointments as listed.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? There be none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item two point six, may I have a motion for approval of student action?
I make a motion to approve the placement of student in a long-term alternative education program.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? There be none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item two point seven, may I have a motion for approval of student action?
I make a motion to approve the placement of student in a long-term home-based virtual education program.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? There be none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We are now adjourned. At a closed. And we are now in session for open meeting for the May twentieth, twenty twenty-five Matthews County School Board regular monthly meeting. Would everyone please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Ms. Morgan, may we have the roll call, please?
Here.
Mr. Morgan?
Present.
Ms. Diggs?
Here.
Ms. Hodges?
Here.
Present, thank you. Item one point four, approval of the agenda additions and deletions, may I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as listed.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item one point five, the consent agenda, may I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve minutes of April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five closed meeting, April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five regular monthly meeting, and April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five joint board of supervisors and school board work session. Approval of requests for use of school bus and driver from Matthews Land Conservancy, approval of requests for use of school bus and driver from Matthews YMCA, approval of revised meeting location for June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five regular monthly meeting, and monthly claims as presented on the consent agenda.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? There be none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, and on this item, we do have the remaining date of July fourteenth, where claims are to be reviewed by a board member, and I am happy to take it if if no one else would like to.
What's the date?
It's July fourteenth. Ms. Morgan, I will take July fourteenth. Thank you. Item one point six, the Matthews County School Board Governance Norms and Protocols. Going to be reading off the two highlighted. Points, and Ms. Diggs, you're on.
Yes.
Thank you.
We will be mindful of the different roles and responsibilities throughout the school system. And maintain a focus on policy and governance. We affirm that we will faithfully and impartially perform our duties while respecting the confidentiality of private information. We will be aware of the different roles that we play as individuals, board members, citizens, parents, et cetera.
Thank you, Ms. Diggs. Moving on to item two, questions or comments from school board student representative, Ms. Zhang.
Hello, good evening. Before we start today, I would, and as I end my last meeting today, I would like to express my gratitude and what an honor it was to work with you all and with you guys all up here. Not only have you guys taught me the importance of leadership, but we have worked through numerous things, for example, discussing how policies and regulations may be withdrawn, conducted, et cetera. But most importantly, I learned that as a leader, you will always have setbacks, but you have to keep persisting. We have conquered many problems and faced issues in the system that I might not have had an opinion on before coming into the school year. We've discussed cell phone policy issues, transportation issues, and budgeting, but most importantly, to keep persisting. Working with you all has shaped me as a person, allowed me to gain confidence, and let me speak up against issues that arose. I hope that my legacy will be nothing but positive and that we will all strive for success. I could admit that before I started this, I did watch some of the previous recorded live streams because I was nervous and I didn't know what to expect. But any future school board student representatives watching this, this position is nowhere near as impossible as one may think. It is a unique role to take on, but your opinion matters and speak up the most where you can. Make change. Allow your solutions to be not only impactful, but also feasible, and that's one of the things that we had mentioned earlier during the V S B A conference, but I thought that stuck with me, so I had mentioned that again. Do not hesitate to speak up among your peers and your classmates. Befriend the board, because after all, you're in this school system together. We are here to form a positive relationship that can enhance our school system. And then, moving on to. Thank you. Moving on to Mrs. Bray at the elementary school, she mentions that they had a very busy month. On April fifteenth, the first and the second graders held their spring showcase. The students had some awesome artwork on display, and they worked hard on their musical performance. On April twenty-fifth, the Virginia Department of Forestry visited our third graders. After the presentation, each student got a tree to take home and plant. On May third, some M E S students went to the great computer challenge at Old Dominion University. Our first and second grade team won excellent for graphic design, and our third and through fifth grade team won honorable mention in desktop presentations. We are so proud of all of the students who competed. On May fifth through ninth, we celebrated teacher appreciation week. The outpouring from the Matthews community was amazing, and M E S has never felt so loved. Our students recently completed the vowels testing, and our third and fourth grade students are wrapping up and rocking their S O Ls. On May sixteenth, the P T O hosted a sneaker ball, and I just want to say, as a student, I'm so happy to always see many parents turn out to chaperone. Yesterday, on May nineteenth, the second graders started taking swimming lessons at the Matthews Yacht Club. I remember when I did that, and I was not good. We are thankful to the Matthews YMCA for providing this opportunity for our students. We are looking forward to our pre-K promotion ceremony for our rising kindergarten students on May thirtieth at nine o'clock. M E S will also host Field Day on June third. The students are excited and looking forward to a great day of friendly competition, and I believe you can contact the school if you guys want to help out. On June fifth, M E S will hold the fourth grade promotion ceremony. We are sad to see our fourth graders go, but we know that they are going to do amazing things at T H M S and on. And a last message from Mrs. Simpson. Mrs. Simpson notes that the Seahawks have had a great month of school. Thank you to our S C A and family consumer science students who helped out at the Torrey Chesapeake by making and selling breakfast items for the cyclists who participated in the event. Thank you to Mrs. Gregg, Ms. Williams, Mrs. Lindberg for supporting our Seahawks. Congratulations to our Seahawk band who had a great performance last week. Thanks to Mr. Givens for providing a strong music program in Matthews County. The F C C L A students are also working diligently to prepare for the national competition in Orlando. Good luck to them. Students have been working on completing units and material for their classes. Teachers have also been reviewing content to ensure that students are prepared for their S O L assessments. And the following dates are very important for ending the school year. May sixteenth was the last day to charge in the cafeteria. Please check your child's account to make sure they have money for meals. Students will also be testing this week for sixth and seventh grade S O L math on Thursday, the twenty-second. T H M S is also hosting a STEM night at T H M S cafeteria on May twenty-second from five to seven o'clock. Everyone is invited to see the work that our students have been doing. To let students, parents, and guardians know, all books are due back to the T H M S library on Friday, May twenty-third, and seventh grade students will tie dye shirts on May twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. Students will need to bring in a white shirt to tie dye for that day. Information about summer school will be coming out soon, families will be notified about their child's participation. T H M S Seahawks have been working on arriving on time and being at school each day. Great job, Seahawks. And a final message from Dr. Greif at the high school. We've had a lot of fun activities this past month as we approach graduation. Our last activity day was on April eighteenth, where many of our clubs wrapped up the year with celebrations and awards. On April twenty-second, many of our musicians were inducted into the Tri-M Music Honor Society. On April twenty-sixth, we enjoyed our junior senior prom and after prom party. Again, great support from the parents, faculty, and just chaperones. Thank you to Mrs. Griffith, the junior class officers, the Matthews County Sheriff's Office, and all of these chaperones and volunteers who made this event so successful. On May fifth, our graduating seniors took their graduation picture in the auditorium, followed by our annual senior walk throughout all three schools. We really appreciate all the support and excitement from Matthews Elementary School and T H M S to celebrate our graduates and send the message that everyone in our school division is proud of their accomplishments. On May fifteenth, our music department performed their annual spring concert. Congratulations to Mr. Givens and all of our award recipients for all of their hard work to make this such a success. On May eighteenth, our seniors held our annual baccalaureate service at Matthews Baptist Church, and we're all excited about graduation on May thirty-first at ten a.m. in the Harry M Ward Auditorium at Matthews High School. Thank you.
Ms. Zhang, wonderful report, and we will have a moment to speak of you in just a minute, but thank you so much for everything you've done for us this year. You've been a real asset to the board, thank you.
May I just?
Yes.
Thank you. As members of the school board, we get a quarterly review magazine from V S B A, and I open it up, and I don't even know if you know that your picture is here? Yes, I will pass this on to you. From the president, Dr. Joanda Rollins Fells, met with our school board representatives, the student representatives across the state. It doesn't have a date on here, but these young scholars, I'm quoting, "These young scholars were brilliant, insightful, and well-spoken. We delved into various topics such as the skills they have and are growing through their board experience, how they gather and share student voices, and advice for future student representatives," to name a few. They only have ten pictures, I don't know if there are more students involved, but our very own, Sukie is right there at the bottom, and I'll send this to you, I'll pass it on to you for you to have. Okay, so again, thank you for taking this so seriously and engaging at the state level. Thank you.
That was excellent. You're welcome. She should get to keep that.
Yes, that's for you.
Moving on to item three, recognitions. Item three point one, the twenty twenty-five V S B A Business Honor Role for Richardson's Cafe. And I would just like to, would you, would you please come up front? Read this to you. Just stand so the audience can see you there, that's, that's great. I'm gonna read this resolution. Resolution for the twenty twenty-five Virginia School Boards Association Business Honor Role. Whereas public schools and local businesses are an integral part of this community, and whereas many local businesses play a crucial role in support of our schools, and whereas the economic health of our community, state, and nation depend on a strong public school system, and whereas collaboration between public schools and local businesses strengthens schools and the business community alike by providing a well-trained and highly educated workforce, and whereas an excellent public school system is vital to the quality of life in this community and fundamental to preserving a strong democratic society now and in the future. Therefore, be it resolved that the Matthews County School Board names Richardson's Cafe to the twenty twenty-five Virginia School Boards Association Business Honor Role, showing appreciation for the ongoing support of this community's public schools. Your generosity has aided this community in focusing on the goal of providing the best public schools we can for every child who attends them. This was adopted on the eighteenth of March, twenty twenty-five, and signed by all members, and I want to thank you personally for the extra effort and generosity that you have shown our board and our schools all year. It couldn't go to a more deserving party. Thank you. There you go. Thank you really so much. Yes, sure. Do you want to go to the podium? Go to the podium and feel free.
First, I'd like to thank God for blessing me with such a wonderful business and the awesome team that he's blessed me with, so many good employees, which includes a lot of teachers. So I want to do that, and also I want to thank my husband, and Amy's with me tonight. As you all know, there is no I in team, and it takes a village to do what we do, and Amy is always there, Katie is always there to help me as well, she was unable to attend tonight, but it is an honor and it is truly our pleasure that we're able to sow and do what we do for the community. So thank you, I want to thank you as well.
Twenty twenty-five Expressions of Freedom Contest for Region Three, Ms. Avilia C. Payne, and I understand she is not present. Did you have a word to say, Dr. Daniel?
Sure, so I can talk a little bit about that. So Avilia is not with us this evening because she is actually in Richmond participating in this award. So Avilia has been selected to represent Region Three in the twenty twenty-five Expressions of Freedom Contest, where student work has been chosen to be placed in a time capsule in the restored pedestal of the Statue of George Washington located in the historic Trafalgar Square in London, England. This statue serves as a reminder of the enduring friendship and shared ideals, principles, and sacrifices between America and England. So today, representatives from the offices of the Governor of Virginia, the First Lady of Virginia, the Secretary of Education, the Executive Director of the Virginia Two Fifty, and the Virginia Department of Education are coming together to recognize and celebrate the outstanding work at a special ceremony at the Capitol in Richmond. So our Thomas Hunter Middle School student was recognized from across Region Three. Her work was then chosen among the representatives from Region Three to be placed in that, in that time capsule. But she couldn't be with us because she's in Richmond celebrating that recognition, so we just wanted to make sure that we didn't let tonight go by without recognizing her.
And finally, our last recognition is item three point three, our school board student representative. Again, Ms. Zhang, if you, I would really like to have a picture with the board, is that possible if we all join up front here, and Dr. Daniel?
Congratulations on being a most awesome student representative for our board. You have really set the stage for the next board liaison, and we look forward to hearing from you as you proceed with your education. We have great hopes and we know you're going to achieve all of your goals. Please, from the bottom of our hearts, thank you for everything you've done for us. us.
Yes.
I've had the privilege, Sukie, to be on some boards, scholarship boards, and your name has appeared more than once on the ones I'm on, and your documentation of what you have done in your education, and not only in high school, but in your whole education, it's, it's at the top of the top, I think. And I feel as a board member that we are richer because you've been with us this year, and I know you'll do great things in the future. The best to you.
Thank you.
First of all, thank you, all your other commitments and academics, to be here every meeting and to have a very prepared report, has been most appreciated. You have set a new bar for student representative on the board, and, and you're, I suspect you're going to be a hard act to follow, but what I've also noticed is that you have taken an opportunity to engage in the, in, in all dimensions of the board by going to the conference, the annual conference, by participating with the Dr. Rollins, and, and that says to me, that's probably what you do with your education. You don't just skim the surface. You take advantage of all that's available to you, and I, I only expect to hear great things as you move on to UVA next year. Please keep in touch. We would love to hear back from you.
Thank you.
Sukie, Ms. Hodges used up a lot of my words, but you are going to be a very difficult act to follow. You've done a superb job. I'm very impressed with you, and we are going to miss you up here just something awful, but take care of yourself and get a good education, and come back and see us.
Thank you. I'll miss you guys too. Thank you.
It's been an honor. Thanks, Ms. Yang. Don't please.
Sorry, I just wanted to add one piece. There's kind of a tangible example of how Sukie took control of this office is when we had some boiler issues at the elementary school, and we ended up having to close all the schools across the division. There were some transportation challenges and issues regarding students going to Chesapeake Bay Governor's School. So while we had received some, some parent requests, concerns, seeking out opportunities for their kids, Sukie took it upon herself to also reach out to the board and advocate for her fellow students who were attending Chesapeake Bay Governor's School and working with the board in an attempt to find solutions. So in years of working with school boards and working in the past, we've, there are representatives who come in and do the things that are asked of them, and that's, you know, it's a difficult, difficult task, and it's a reward to be able to just be the student rep. But the unique thing about Sukie is, at least in this one example, and there are countless others, but she took it upon herself to make that role a little larger by advocating for her fellow students and working with the school board and the superintendent to try to find a solution for her, for her students. So that's, that's going a little bit above and beyond what is just expected of that role, and so that's an example of kind of what we're up here talking about, where she kind of took the bull by the horns and tried to make something happen. So just a tremendous job. Great job.
And item four, another recognition for Ms. Tracy Elliott, Region 18 Adult Education Program Manager, and Ms. Edith W. Turner, Adult Education Instructor.
Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Daniel, Chairperson Gibbs, Vice Chairperson Hodges, and School Board Members. My name is Tracy Elliott, and I am the Regional Program Manager for Middle Peninsula Race, or MP Race, as we like to call ourselves, shortened. We are the Regional Adult Basic Education, GED Services, Digital Literacy, and ELL program that serves adults 18 and older in Matthews and throughout the Middle Peninsula. We have been serving Middle Peninsula residents for approximately 20 years. We offer in-person, virtual, one-on-one tutoring, and distance education options. One of the most difficult steps for an adult is making the initial phone call to the regional office to inquire about our services. It takes so much courage for our adult learners to call the office and say that they want to improve their reading skills or their math skills, learn English, or earn a GED. Their reasons run the gamut from a personal goal to setting an example for their children to getting a job, a raise, or continuing their education. The first question out of their mouth is always, "How long is this going to take me?" Unfortunately, that is a question I can't answer. Everyone's journey is different, and there is no set time. Some adults need to brush up on a few skills and are ready to test, while other adults need longer to learn the academic and digital literacy skills necessary to pass the four subject tests on the GED. Historically, most of the adults we serve fall into the 25 to 46 age group and are predominantly female. When students do earn their GED credential, Dr. Beverly Godwin, the Specialist of High School Equivalency at V D O E, signs the certificate, and it goes directly to the student. So our student tonight already has her GED certificate. We have an amazing instructional team here in Matthews. I could not rave about them or say enough wonderful things about them. The team consists of Mrs. Susan Sanderson and Mrs. Edith Turner. Ms. Edith Turner, they're here tonight. Come on up with me. Every adult has a story to tell. We have had an incredible program year in Matthews. Two students have earned their GED credential, and two other students are just one test away from earning their GED credential. So it's been an incredible year here in Matthews. It is my honor tonight to introduce you to one of our most recent Matthews GED recipients, Ms. Sharon Williams. So Sharon was set to graduate from high school in 1976. She had her cap and gown pictures taken. She was ready to go, and life happened, and she was not able to finish high school in Sharon is a fairly new resident in Matthews County, but she is not on this journey by herself. Sharon came to the Matthews class with her daughter back in January of 2024. Her daughter has passed two of the subjects on the GED test and is continuing on her journey to earn her GED credential. Sharon was always on time to class. She encouraged the other students, and even though she was the oldest student in the class, she didn't let that deter her. Please help us acknowledge Sharon's achievement. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to tell you about MP Race and recognize Ms. Sharon Williams. Please excuse us. We're going to go celebrate with Sharon and her family. Thank you.
Moving on to item five, a presentation from H E S Facilities Management.
Good evening, Matthews County Board of Education and leadership. We have here tonight as well as the community. My name is Russell Leboff with H E S. I'm Vice President of Business Development. I've been a citizen of Virginia now for about 25 years. I've been doing what I do today, supporting schools for about 15 years, and I am a big fan of public education. I grew up with a single mom. My father was killed in Vietnam in '67, so my mother had three boys to raise by herself. Well, she didn't do it by herself because we had teachers help get us to school, had coaches help get me to practice. So public education was a big part of my life. So when I can help public education with what we do, we enjoy doing that. So I think we can help you. So we're going to talk a little bit about that real quick. So just a little bit about H E S. You know, our combined companies have been together since 1972. If you look at all our companies, that's the oldest company in our portfolio. So we've got decades' experience in our leadership team. As a matter of fact, our CEO started off as a custodian, working at the University of Tennessee, and that is how he worked his way through college, and he's now our CEO. I didn't have that good fortune. I worked in a liquor store. Back then, drinking age was 18, and I was able to work in a liquor store, but I also worked my way through college. We're in 28 states now, and we have over 160 education partners. We have about 10 school systems that we now serve in Virginia, and we have Avery University, which is our single higher ed. We plan to get more, but that's the single higher ed that we have. We are excited to be working with you. You may think, "Well, we're just a small school system." Well, we, we have small school systems that we partner with, and we have large school systems that we partner with. You're not the smallest. We have one in North Carolina that's one school, one school building, and three schools combined into one school building. So it's the middle schools, the elementary school, and the high school all combined. If you look at the list of some of the customers we have, we serve Chesterfield County Public Schools as an example of a big school system, but then we also have small school systems, you know, like you, and both are very effective. If you talk to Chesterfield, they'll tell you that they're having a good experience with us. If you talk to any of the customers that we have up here, they'll tell you the same. And then down in the bottom right-hand corner, that is the School Board for Powhatan County Public Schools. We recently recognized them with an award because we, we watch what you do. We watch your live streams. We watch you interact with the community. We watch how you interact with each other, and we've been watching Powhatan, and they've been doing a really great job. So we presented them with an award, an Excellence in Education Award, along with a monetary grant to their school that they can use for scholarships or whatever they choose to use it for. We hope to give you an award someday soon. We, we're very proud of doing that because, you know, you don't always get the recognition you deserve. And let me tell you, I have the entire Southeast that I'm responsible for, and I've been to a lot of board meetings, and I've seen a lot of things. I've seen a lot of things. My, my last experience that was pretty crazy is I got to be in a board meeting from 5:00 p.m. to 4:30 a.m. the next day. That's a true story. I'm not going to tell you who it was. We won't, we won't call them out. Just real quick, we have a great team here in Virginia. Everybody that you see here that's in management and leadership on this slide is, is in Virginia. So we're all based in Virginia. I'm in Amelia, my son, who also works for our company. I did not have anything to do with him being hired. They just did it. They found out about him and hired him. He lives in Powhatan. We've got a couple people living in Lynchburg, somebody in Williamsburg, Ron Marable, Billy Pips in Chesterfield. So we, we have a lot of support, leadership support in the state to support you and to support our other partners. Recruiting and retention. Everybody always wants to say, you know, getting people and keeping people is all about paying them more. Well, it's not. Early in my career, I took a 50% pay cut to go work for a company who treated me with respect and cared about me. 50% pay cut's a pretty big pay cut. What we have done here is we've gone the other direction. We actually are going to have higher wages, and we're going to include benefits with those wages. But what we feel is you, you got to avoid this cliff that's coming, and what I mean by that is if you look at the workforce in the United States right now for facilities management, the average age is 50, almost 50, not quite 50. Well, also, if you look at the age of the buildings, guess what? They're almost 52. So if you don't get ahead of that curve, you're going to have a lot of your facilities management retire out, and then there's not going to be anybody to fill their shoes. So one of the things that we're doing is we've, we've structured how we do things, how we provide benefits, how we pay, and how we treat everybody to make sure that we can get a more youthful workforce. And what I mean by youthful, I'm not necessarily talking about age. I'm talking about finding folks who are early in their career, maybe just out of college, or maybe they're not going to college. Maybe they graduated high school. We want to get them into the program as soon as we can, but not only get them into the program, we want to nurture them. We want to grow them. We want to develop them, and hopefully they get promoted. We just promoted a lady in Ashburn City Schools three times in the last four years. She started off as a custodian. She's now our regional manager running one of our largest regions. She started off as a custodian for Ashburn City Schools. We got permission to talk to her about that advancement opportunity, and they let us do it. Going back to the money issue, it's, it's not always about the money, but you do have to have competitive wages, but you also have to treat everyone with a lot of respect. When we started services with a school system not too far from here, I went into that school system 60 days later, and I interviewed everybody, well, not everybody, about 30 of their staff. And I asked them, "What do you like better with the change?" Because nobody likes change. I don't even like positive change because it's change. But what they said to me was they really appreciated having a manager, a supervisor, who would return their phone calls, because up until that point, the school system was so busy, they didn't have people who could return their phone calls. They didn't have anybody who could help them when they had a problem. So that was the number one answer. The number two answer surprised me. They said they were happy to have new equipment. They would get so frustrated trying to use a scrubber that didn't work or a spray bottle that didn't work, that it would just frustrate them, and some people left because of it. I mean, you're not getting, you know, you don't, you're not making a lot of money. You know, you're not being treated well. You don't have equipment that works well. You'll find something else to do, and so that's, that's key in, in making sure that, you know, you have good morale. We have standard operating procedures. So when you think about safety, you, you're going to see that we have safety protocols that are consistent, and everybody is taught and trained on the safety protocols. Cleaning procedures are consistent across the board. You don't have them different from one school to the other, from one leader to the other. They're all consistent. We also have incentives and bonuses. One of the things that we found is that we had to start paying people to come to work. You know, you can be fully staffed, 100% staffed, but if they don't come to work, it doesn't matter. So we now have attendance, performance, incentives. So we give them monetary incentives to have perfect attendance. We also have referral fees that we give. So if you have someone who works for the school system, maybe it's an admin support position, they refer somebody to us, we're going to pay them a referral fee of $200 if that individual works 90 days. So we have a lot of incentives now. We have a lot of bonuses, and we also have the promotion opportunities that I talked about. Lastly, and this is probably the most important, is the Cs. We have great communication with our staff. We have great communication with you. We have great communication with the principals, who are really the CEOs of their schools. We don't want the principals to lose control or feel like they lose control. We just don't want them to have to do the day-to-day management of the program, but we want them to maintain control. We also have connectivity. We have connectivity with you and also with our staff. We stay involved with them. We stay engaged with them. The main thing we do is we fight complacency, because I don't care what you do, whether you're a sports team, or whether you're a school board, or whether you do what we do. The biggest problem is complacency. You have a lot of success. You're doing well. I hear a lot of recognition here tonight. It's easy when you have success to start letting things slide, maybe not work as hard as you used to because things got comfortable. We won't do that. We also have something called daily pay, and this is exciting. You're in, the individuals be working in your schools now, we've got to get their pay every day, up to 40%. So they work a shift, complete a shift, they can get up to 40% of their pay. This is important. Well, you know, you can't, it's hard to pay somebody once a month or twice a month, but when they have access to 40% of their pay daily, that's a big deal for them. So with that said, I know I said a lot, but I wanted to get some of the key components to our program out there before we went into Q and A, but now what I'd like to do is open it up to Q and A. Questions?
Well, I'll just say we're really looking forward to partnering, partnering with you and looking forward to great things, and this sounds very individual-oriented and very focused on the, the employees, and I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. We are too.
Members, you have any questions? Dr. Daniel, is there anything to say?
Well, thank you for your time this evening. Dr. Daniel said I had 10 minutes. I hope I didn't go over. If I did, I apologize.
Thank you very much for coming to speak with us tonight.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me. Thank you. Thank you.
Item six, student achievement. Dr. Daniel, be presenting the STAR data information.
So, tonight's student data presentation, we're going to talk a little about the year-long STAR data results. We concluded the spring universal screening a couple of weeks ago, about the time, right just before our April School Board meeting, we had kind of wrapped up. But we hadn't had time to get all the makeups, all the students who had missed, get all the makeups testing completed. So, let's get this turned on and off. All right. There we go. Thank you. All right. So, one of the things I wanted to do was, with this data, is to compare where we were in the fall and how we finished up with our spring universal screening. So, again, the universal screening data is quick. They're snapshots. They are not a comprehensive assessment in any way, shape, or form, but they are just kind of quick snapshots to give us an idea of how students are performing. But then, also, from the school level and the division level, it gets us, gives us an idea of kind of how our grade levels are doing. We'll talk about tier-one instruction. So, this is a good way for us to get a gauge on what does our tier-one instruction look like. So, we, ideally, we want to be at probably an 80% to 85% of all of our students are meeting benchmark at these intervals. And obviously, when you look at the numbers on the screen, we are not at 80%. So, we have work to do with our tier-one instruction. Another piece to look at with, or to keep in mind with the STAR data, is that when we started this last winter, over the summer, the benchmarks, the tests were re-benchmarked. So, our averages and norms had to be slightly adjusted. So, instead of comparing this year to last year, we're comparing kind of where we are spring to where we are, where we were in the fall. So, what I tried to do was highlight improvement areas. In some cases, improvement may be a reduction in number, or improvement may be an increase in number. So, we want more students at benchmark. In some cases, we want more students at on-watch, and then fewer students at intervention, and obviously, fewer students at the intervention level. So, if we're moving students up from intervention, hopefully getting them to at benchmark. So, if we're seeing kind of a reduction from that urgent level and an increase kind of up that, up the line at benchmark, that's considered progress, or that would be considered growth. So, what is highlighted in green is an increase or an improvement from fall to spring. Some close examination of the numbers, you'll see some fluctuation from our winter performance to our spring performance, whether that be in math or in reading. And so, the principals and leadership within the school is looking at that data and having grade-level data conversations to look at kind of why, why we didn't see necessarily the growth across the board, say, from spring from the winter testing. But kind of as we begin to look, as we begin to close out the year, we're looking at kind of where we, what the growth was from the fall to the springtime. So, in most, the wide majority, the vast majority of our grade levels in math and in reading, we saw growth from fall to spring. One other piece to keep in mind is that the benchmark, the level of expectation, continues to increase across the year. So, that norm is going to continue to move up. So, even if our students, if we're flat in terms of at benchmark, those students are still growing. They're growing at the expected pace. So, where we have improvement, we'll say, from urgent moving into intervention, those students are exceeding the growth rate than what was expected, if that makes sense. So, there's an expected return on instruction over the course of a year. So, if a student moves from, say, on-watch to at benchmark, that student exceeded the expected rate of growth to move out of one category and move up a category. I'm kind of looking for nods that you're following me. So, they're doing more than a year's worth of growth within a year. Let me rephrase it that way, if that helps, to move from one category to another. So, just some highlights. I think second grade is pretty significant growth across the board. I'm trying to remember some of the, some of the specific pieces to highlight. One of the things, though, I did want to do in terms of, one of the observations, looking at the data from fall to spring, is really the reduction in the number of students who are at that urgent level. So, what that suggests is our tier-three or our most intensive interventions are being successful, that we're moving students who were significantly below grade level, moving those students up closer to performing at grade level for math and for reading. Those are not, that doesn't happen by accident. It is very intentional, very hard work from the students in those programs, the families at home, but also the teachers in the classrooms and the intervention teachers who are working with those students. So, they, the data shows pretty significant improvement across grade levels in moving students out of that urgent category and reducing the number of students who are significantly below grade level and working to move them towards grade-level performance. Looking at our fifth through eighth grade, again, green is highlighting growth or improvement from the fall to the spring. Again, you're going to see some places where there was kind of, moving from winter to spring, there isn't the same growth, or we kind of moved back a little bit in terms of overall percentages. A piece, too, to keep in mind, at grade level, you're going to have roughly 60 students per grade level. That's going to, those numbers are a little bit smaller in the primary grades, but roughly in grades five through eight, you're going to have about 60 kids. So, easy way to think about it is every, every percentage is about two students. So, kind of, we're talking two, three, maybe four students, up or down in category, from category to category. But again, we see way more, way more green than we do white in terms of some of those Again, looking at highlighting from urgent, moving students out of the urgent level and moving up, you see great growth in that category in fifth grade, some spots in terms of math performance in seventh grade, some reading, quite a bit of reading performance in eighth grade. We're working with the middle school and teachers and grade levels to work on kind of, how do we get, middle school is always difficult. It's difficult everywhere. Just student engagement, student achievement, it's difficult. So, working with teachers on how to engage students, having a more thorough adoption of CIP going into next year, having detailed curriculum, and just looking at instructional practices. So, we've had work from CERN and William &amp; Mary coming in to work with teachers on various instructional practices. And as we move forward with MTSS, we'll continue to see growth in these, in the areas with STAR. So, next month, we'll take a look at VOWs. VOWs going from K through third grade. So, we'll look at that data. We can do a little bit of comparison between our VOWs performance and growth in VOWs performance data and our STAR data. So, we're seeing the growth. It's obviously, again, I think I've said this several times, but it's, it's not where we want it to be. But high achievement doesn't happen by accident, and it doesn't happen overnight. So, it takes intentionality, and it takes time to change practices, change expectations, both within the classroom, but also within the community in terms of attendance practices and homework practices and engagement, and again, rigor and expectations. So, we're moving in that direction. I think we would all love it, love to be able to move a little bit faster, but progress, progress is happening. Any questions from the board on some STAR data?
First of all, thank you. It's clearly a mixed, mixed bag here. I'm wondering, looking at, let me first say, it's good to see the progress made in so many areas. I don't want to dismiss that. I'm kind of honing in on the eighth-grade math because one of the areas, one of the challenges, I think, have been students who don't have a strong math foundation at eighth grade, now moving to algebra and having challenges there with passing the SOL. Is there any correlation with this STAR math and readiness for algebra? You know what I'm saying? Is there anything to take away from these numbers at eighth grade just to let teachers know what they may, they should be prepared for next year as they enter Algebra I, Part I?
Yes. So, there's diagnostic information that you can pull from each student's STAR report that can guide intervention or remediation for future, future assistance for students. In terms of an indicator for algebra readiness, years ago, there was the ARDT, or the Algebra Readiness Diagnostic Test. This isn't necessarily going to give you a readiness index for algebra.
Okay.
But STAR data coupled with performance in that eighth-grade class, performance on that eighth-grade SOL, will make a decision with, will help inform the counselors and teachers and administration at the high school into which algebra class they may go in. So, they may be in a double-blocked Algebra I class, or they may be in an Algebra I, Part I class in their ninth-grade year as opposed to going into a single-blocked Algebra I class. And also, for eighth grade, this is all eighth graders. So, it's every student in eighth grade. So, it's not just students who are in Math VIII in eighth grade. So, just keeping that in mind. So, seventh grade is all seventh graders. So, yeah, so, they'll look at student, individual student performance when they're looking at what classes to schedule students into for Algebra I the next year.
Thank you. I would just plant a seed maybe for future, if, certainly not this summer, but if we need to consider having some kind of math summer school for those eighth graders who are in Math VIII to help get them ready for Algebra I, Part I. So, because we know so many struggle passing that SOL.
Well, I also think that, as you look at seventh grade and the growth in the seventh grade math, that those students are going to be better prepared for than eighth-grade math. And so, that is going to continue to build and to build and to build.
Thank you for that good news.
I've got a, I've got a question. When we were in strategic plan development last summer, and we were talking about the moving of categories and how in some of our testing, students were very close to the next, the next level. We were close to having our 70, 75, and approaching the 80s. Is that something, how far are our on-watch students away from, I know it's going to be it matters by student, everything's unique, but how close are our on-watch to benchmark?
It's a, it's a range. So, students would fall into a range. I would have to, I think, when we first started doing this in the winter and spring of last year, I gave you kind of the bar graphs, and so, there was very much a visual. So, for me to try to give, you know, 18 bar graphs was cumbersome, so I went to this, this way to present. I can pull or share just the spring data and kind of show you the bar graphs for spring and share that with the board to get it, so you can have an idea of, you know, they were one question away, or, you know, in this particular case, they were two or three questions away from being on, on grade level or at benchmark.
Right. That would be, that would be exciting because if we could take, if we can take benchmark and on-watch kind of together, we're moving, you know? We're moving. But if, but if we're very far away, you know, we have a lot more, more work to do. And then, on the, moving from urgent to intervention, is that a harder leap, generally speaking, than moving, say, intervention to on-watch? Or is it all the same?
I would, I would say yes. When I, I, in the first couple of days of SOL testing, I would look at the SOL, the on-demand reports for one of our, one of our tests, reading or math, and then immediately went and pulled the STAR data to get an idea of, is this just, you know, happenstance? Is there a predictability to, okay, you know, all of our benchmark and on-watch kids are still passing the SOL? What I was seeing was, we were having intervention kids, in some cases, passing the SOL test. Every once in a while, some on-watch kids were not passing the SOL. But for a lot of our students who were in the urgent category, category, there, there wasn't an outlier of an urgent student popping up and passing that. So, typically, the students in the urgent have longstanding challenges to learning and require lots of adult services and instructional services to support them during the day. So, we're able, as we're able to move students from that urgent to intervention, that's progress, that's success, that becomes self-sustained sort of building that students are willing to engage in that hard work. And it gets more, it gets more challenging and more, as students become more frustrated in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, that they've had years of school being difficult and school being frustrating to turn that tide for students. So, it's really important that in K1, 2, 3, that we're getting students on grade level as quickly as possible.
Getting the traction.
But yeah, I would say the lift from urgent to intervention is, is heavier than the lift from on-watch to at benchmark or intervention to on-watch.
That makes sense. Thank you for presenting this information.
We're moving along to item seven, citizens' questions, comments, or requests. Comments not pertaining to personnel or student matters are limited to one opportunity of three minutes. Please state your name and address for the School Board clerk. Protocol for public comment period Matthews County residents and school employees wishing to speak should sign up with their name and address on the sheet if provided. Comment period will end after 90 minutes. All comments should be directed to the School Board. Speakers shall not address any matters involving students or personnel, as these topics may violate confidentiality and are not appropriate in a public forum. Public comment is the School Board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the Board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the Superintendent for research and response. The Superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The School Board carefully considers your comments when deciding on matters brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input. Our first speaker is Amy Bohannon Stewart.
Good evening. As a taxpayer here in Matthews, I'm very upset and disappointed that the budget issue of contracting out substitutes and custodial services was not discussed publicly before going through with such a drastic change. I would have wanted to weigh in on this issue and how well I see it doesn't work well where I'm currently employed. I think that it is entirely possible that you're going to open up our schools to a parade of various people that stay for a little while until they find a job they want, instead of having a long-term reliable crew of custodians that are actually... of having a long-term reliable crew of custodians that are actually our employees. And now I'm wondering about, how are special events going to work? I volunteer with after prom and worked late that night of the after prom event and one of your long-term loyal custodians was there to help us. How are things like that going to work in the future with contracted services? Now, I did not address the issue of contracted subs last time I spoke because I just didn't really have enough time, but I'm even more concerned about how contracting out with a company for subs will impact our children. I see that you'll be using the same company that my current employer uses every morning at the middle school where I teach now. A coverage sheet is sent out that we are all required to check and it lets all the teachers know if we're going to be covering a class where sub could not be found. We have to cover classes with no subs so frequently that we have a building-based substitute and they pay teachers like me almost weekly to cover classes. Regardless of being paid to do it, being pulled to sub as much as twice per week has stressed me out so much and it was money, one of the many reasons that prompted me to tell my principal that although I enjoyed working with her, I just couldn't work there next year because of things like this. And those things are beyond her control. The school where I work was unable to find a long-term substitute for a situation that we had in the fall and I'm worried because Matthews seems to have a need for long-term substitutes because people keep leaving mid-year. Please explain how long-term substitutes will work now? Now that you seem to be adding a layer of complication by placing a company between the principal that needs a substitute and the substitute. I think it is best for the children if the substitutes are arranged by the assistant at the front desk that knows her school well and long-term subs negotiated directly with the principal instead of putting a middleman between them. Based on what I've experienced this past year, I would logically think contracting with a company to arrange substitutes is going to cause the lady that once called the subs to start arranging a lot more coverage for classes. It may even lead to our daily, daily spreadsheet being sent out letting teachers know where they're going during their planning period. And we may as well call it a coverage period instead of a planning period. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bohannon Stewart. Is there anyone else you'd like to approach the podium? Okay. We will move on then to number eight, superintendents' informational reports. Item 8.1 is a budget update.
So to highlight for you all, the proposals for the FY26 amended budgets. Just to go back in time a little bit to February and the approved FY26 budget. So that budget was based on, again, enrollment of 725 students. It included a 4% increase to the salary scale as well as a step for all, all employees. It included absorbing all health insurance increases for employees and it included maintaining all current positions, but we said that we would review vacancies as they arose. That budget had in it three new positions. One, a secondary reading specialist, a teacher assistant, an additional teacher assistant, as well as a additional new CTE teacher. And that was based on, revenue was projected based on the January calculation tool, tool provided by the state. Again, some of the highlights, we had talked about what salary increases would look like. Again, that's looking at across the board, 1%, 3% and 5%. What we were anticipating for health insurance increases, we knew that Centerra was going to come in at an increase of 21.4% for a total of $322,000. Anthem was going to be a 5.5% increase, which was about $43,000, $44,000 in the estimated cost for those three new positions. So that totaled $1.1 million in new requested money from the, the county or new requested money towards our budget. And that was what was approved in February. So at that time, we still didn't know what the state budget was going to look like. So that state budget could have had impacts for a possible bonus in FY25, and I'll come back to that in a second. It could have incurred, we could have incurred a reduction in FY25 funding and we could have also seen an increase in FY25 funding. So of that, our FY25 funding was, was relatively stable. In terms of the SOQ bonus, so the state did approve the bonus for FY25. So we, that allocation of money should be coming in the next week or so. I have to certify how we are planning to deploy that, that amount of money. That amount of money is based on $1,000 for SOQ positions per division. We obviously employ more than SOQ positions within our division. The guidance from the state and the, the legislation that was passed regarding this allows school divisions flexibility in how and when that, that amount of money is allocated to employees. There is no match requirement from that, so it is a one-time allocation per division. And again, I guess another way to put it, the way they determined how each, how much money each division was going to get was based on number of full-time SOQ positions. So our plan, my proposal with that amount, with that SOQ bonus money is to deploy the amount of money that we receive to our full-time employees who finish out their 24, 25 contracts with us. So as a way of, it's kind of a, a thank you to the employees who finished this school year with us. The amount of money that we're getting from the state, we will spread that evenly for our full-time employees who finish the school year with us. Most divisions are using the money as a retention or a signing bonus going into the next school year. But as we had conversations about the merger with the maintenance department also moving to contracting out our custodial services, we felt, in some conversations with some individual board members, felt that it was more appropriate for us to recognize the employees who had worked with us during the year. Those, those employees, through no fault of their own, were not going to be Matthews County Public Schools employees going into next year. So we wanted to recognize their, their contribution. And so therefore, the, the goal with that, that bonus money is to deploy it to, towards employees this year who finish out their contracts this year. So if you're still under contract and still working with us late into June, then that money will be allocated. Also too, Ms. Lau has a strategy where we'll put it into, with the check so it doesn't get taxed at a different bonus rate. So we've, she's got a strategy to deploy that. So going back to future considerations, impacts for FY26, we weren't sure at that time when we approved what the state legislator, what that approved budget was going to look like. At that time, we didn't know the number of positions that we may absorb as a school division due to declining enrollment. And then facility improvement costs and impacts on the county budget. So we were still working and still continue to work with the county on just their commitment to facility upgrades and maintenance upgrades within the schools and how that would impact the county's overall budget. Okay, so going into what the board will be voting on this evening, so the amended FY26, here are the highlights to meet the, I guess, fiscal realities within the county and the request the county made of the school division to reduce its request in local funding. So within this budget, it includes, on the teacher scale, the scale moves up 4% and teachers will move one step, which is 1%. So teachers will see a total of a 5% salary increase with scale and step. Support staff scales are 2% plus a step for a total of three. The student services scales and the administration, excuse me, the student services scale and administration scales will be increased 1% and those individuals will also receive a step for a total of 2%. We're moving 50% of the increased health insurance premiums we passed on to employees. That impact is going to vary based on which insurance plan and which option within that plan that you subscribe to. The biggest impact is going to be for individuals who have the Centerra Family Plan. That increase is, is the largest. What we were attempting to do in reducing and adjusting some of the, the salary increase rates to meet the, the budget was to come close to absorbing the health insurance increase. I think in most cases, we were able to get there, but I don't know that in every case, every individual is going to have a, a real raise, if you will, due to, depending on the, the health insurance plan. We removed two new positions requested, the CTE teacher and the teacher assistant. Hang on a second. Are you moving it or am I moving it? It's on me? Okay. It's just a little, it's a little sluggish. Okay, so also within the budget, we are absorbing six total positions. We are looking to reduce extra period supplements for teachers at the high school. We've reduced specific, several specific line items, but some of those are the textbook line item, the cafeteria line item, allocations to the thrifty spot. And then within specific line items, we're looking at subscriptions and lease agreements. So we've not renewed several subscriptions. We're reviewing some lease agreements to see where we can find some savings. Not listed on here, we'll, we had to rebid our internet, so we're anticipating savings with rebidding out our internet services and various other things. So, so we're going, again, going through with a fairly fine tooth comb. There are savings that come from contracting out our custodial services, merging the maintenance departments and some savings associated with contracting out our substitute teachers. What is not impacted by this, we have not had to go into cutting any Virginia High School League programs. We don't have to, with this proposal, there are no cuts to our intermural programs, to any of our regional programs. We haven't had to go in and look at employee contract lengths. One of the things we were worried about initially was if we were going to have to move some 12-month employees back to 11 months or some 11-month employees back to 10 months and looking at those pieces. So we've not had to touch, touch those pieces in order to meet the needs of the budget. So a quick review on expected funding and differences in the then amended FY26 budget. So there's about $128,000, an increase of about $500 or so into the FY26, some state funding. One of the things, even though our enrollment, this budget that we're living under right now is 750, is based on 750. The next FY26 is based on 725 students. We are still, because of the increase per student and SOQ funding, we're anticipating, the calc tool has us an increase of about $46,000. That's a significant difference from the January calculation tool, so that, that's about a $300,000 difference from what we were anticipating receiving from the state and what we should, and should receive from the state. Federal funding differences, our local operating is going down just under $600,000. And then the reduc, reduction in funding towards thrifty spot and cafeteria and textbooks is listed there. The reduction in school food is from what was proposed at the February budget. So there is still an increase over FY25 to FY26 in terms of funding for the cafeteria school food. However, we reduced the amount that we were planning to allocate towards the cafeteria. Expenditures, so some of those reductions in expenditures are reflected there. Again, so the reduction in thrifty spot expenditures, operating, you'll see within instruction is increasing a little over half a million dollars. That's basically health insurance costs and salary increases. Reduction in the administration attendance and health category by just under $100,000. Transportation declines, operations and maintenance is significant. That's due to moving that over, most of that, the bulk of that department over to, to the county. The bulk of what's remaining in that $800,000, a big chunk of that is contract for custodial services. So that's about $580,000 of that $800,000 is still, still in there. So our, our operating budget for this year is $15.9 million and then goes up to $17.1 with cafeteria textbooks, et cetera. Questions on highlights? We've had lots of conversations and individual kind of small group conversations and, but that's, those are kind of the highlights.
I had a question, Dr. Daniel, on the reduced line item for textbooks. Could you just?
So part of the, part of the rationale in reducing the line item for textbooks has to do with the math textbook adoption.
Okay.
And so the state timeline is getting pushed, so we won't have a math textbook series to adopt until probably next year. And so we didn't need to allocate as much money for that because the, the state isn't ready to sign off on math textbooks yet and give us an approved list that we can begin to order from. So because we're not buying a whole, a K-12 math textbook series, we don't need to have the money in there. And so we can put that in other areas.
That's fortunate. Good. Members' questions? Thank you very much. Yes, please. Item 8.2, the attendance update.
I'll just go ahead and say up here since I'm here.
Yeah.
Okay, so attendance data. I'm going to fast forward through December, hopefully. All right, so April data, we're starting to inch closer towards the end of the year. It becomes increasingly, holding the line on attendance and chronic absenteeism gets, gets difficult as the weather gets warmer. So looking at data from, looking at who is at the chronically absent state this year compared to last year, we see an increase at the high school. Again, a piece to keep in mind is the high school has an additional grade level this year over last year. So you see a reduction at Thomas Hunter this year compared to last year. They have one grade level fewer, but again, 18 students is, is significant. Matthews elementary school is working diligently, but they're at 30 students chronically absent as opposed to 18 this time last year. Just a note with, within the elementary school, those numbers include pre-K. So the number of students who are absent, that is including our pre-K students. In terms of our state reporting, pre-K is not factored into our pre-K reporting. This is also This is also raw data, so there are going to be students who are included in here who may have withdrawn, withdrawn and gone to homeschool at various points as we've continued to develop attendance plans. And also, to looking at percentages for the accountability framework. So, below 15% chronically absent is the goal. And so, I ran the numbers. I didn't put them on this, on this chart. So, I think we're right at that threshold with the high school in terms of the number of students. But, so if, even if the high school is at, say, 16%, two years ago, the high school was at 33% chronically absent. So, while seeing 52 students out of 324 who have missed more than 17 days is not what we want it to be, again, it's improvement, it's changing habits, it's changing culture. Again, Thomas Hunter seeing success. To me, the concern remains how do we, remains with students at the elementary school and ensuring and working with families to prioritize attendance at school every day being a critical piece. Littles are going to get sick and immune systems getting built up and school tolerance for cold and flu and et cetera. But, looking at some of the data, like those habits start, start super, super early and prioritizing school has to come super, super early. And so, I know Ms. Bray and the staff at the elementary school and Taryn Thomas are working with families to make sure those students are coming to school and developing attendance plans. And all that work is paying off, but again, it's, it's hard, hard work. It's hard work changing habits and behaviors within a community. I'm trying to think, I think that's, I don't think I put tardy, yeah, I don't think I put tardy data for April on there, so. So, that's, that's kind of where we are right now. It's what's super important from now until the end of the year, as we're working through exams at the high school, SOL test completion, is keeping students engaged and keeping students coming to school in these last three weeks of school and making sure they're not moving from, you know, they're not missing days 15, 16, 17, and 18 in these last few weeks of school and moving them into that chronically absent. And I think I mentioned it last month, but the chronic absenteeism isn't, isn't a Matthews rule, isn't a Virginia rule, it's a federal rule that is passed on to states as part of state's accountability to the USCD, and so therefore, it's a local accountability measure within, within the state. So, and we have, there are constant conversations about, you know, you know, we can do, we can do what we can do, but we can't do everything with, we can't go and, you know, pull kids into the, onto the school bus or into the schools, but we can do a lot of things, but it's, I don't know that any school has, any school division that I've talked to has the, has the magic solution. Some, some have better attendance rates than others, but I think all of them continue to struggle in one way, shape, or form, or one zone or another zone, so.
And just a note on this, we will be addressing absenteeism and the policy at the summer work session.
Yes.
So, we'll have an opportunity to speak about this.
Yep, so, we're going to try to, try to work on some, a few more things to continue to tighten up.
Yep.
I guess I'm speaking to both you, Dr. Daniel, and Chair Dr. Gibbs. I'm wondering if we need to try to do some research to see if there's any small divisions that have had some success in turning around the chronic absenteeism and to see what they're doing differently. Is there anything that's published through the state?
Going, I mean, there have been some workshops, and as I go to conferences, there's some breakout sessions. A lot of it has to do with having a, you know, hiring a school social worker that we've done. It's breakfast after the bell to make sure kids are fed and encouraging students to come to school, which, which we've, we've done. It's working on having different activities and attendance incentives, which we've, we've done. A big part of it, and, you know, some school divisions operate kind of a second bus run in the morning, that if you miss the first bus run, we'll come by and pick you up with the second bus run. I don't know that that would, I don't know that that's the solution for us. I'm happy when there's an attendance plan and we can put in place, call the school and we'll send somebody to come get you. I mean, we'll, we'll find that solution with a student and a family who's on an attendance plan and, you know, Timmy missed the bus and we don't have a car right now, we'll send somebody to go, to go get Timmy. I don't think anybody has, has, sees that as a barrier. The barrier is then making sure that we get that phone call saying like, hey, can somebody come get? I don't, I don't think it's.
Are we doing that now? Are we?
I think that's in attendance plans where, you know, you can call in and we'll, we'll figure out a way to come get you.
That's good.
And I know they're working on different, different solutions. It's making sure the court system is a partner with the school divisions and enforcing truancy laws. I think that's, it's been hit or miss. But, it also takes a really long time to get a, a student and a family before a judge with truancy. I mean, it, it takes months in order for that to happen, in order to meet the threshold, to do all the steps required to then take it before the judge. So, it, you know, it, it has to be chronic, often and early, and if you're lucky, you might, you know, meet that by January or February to get a student before the judge.
And you may not know the answer to this. Do you know if there are any families that have gone to homeschooling because of the absentee, the pressure from being at, okay?
Yeah. It's not widespread, but it's, when we looked at it at our, at our last retreat, Ms. Thomas had pulled sort of, I'd hidden the names, but had pulled individual students, the number, the reasons for their attendance, for their absences. And there was a note section that listed, you know, has withdrawn to homeschool, and so, I think there were about a half dozen students across the three schools at that point who had withdrawn to homeschool due to attendance.
Attendance versus dispo.
Required, us enforcing attendance policy and state code for attendance. So, when you go to homeschool there, you know, you're exempt from kind of those attendance laws, so.
Thank you.
And there are multiple reasons why, again, why students are absent and why students select homeschool, or families select homeschool for their students. But, yeah, we see that relatively frequently.
Would you like to speak on the funding for asbestos abatement at Thomas Hunter Middle School?
Sure, I'll sit down.
Okay.
So, some really good news related to our, to the state budget. We were informed by the Virginia Department of Education that a million dollars had been allocated in the state budget for asbestos abatement for Thomas Hunter Middle School. That was part of the, part of the legislation. I want to give kudos to Ms. Hodges and Senator McDougal's office for working to support Matthews and Thomas Hunter Middle School to get that funding for us. This was born out of the legislators in our Schools Day, where we had legislators, local and state and national, come and toured the school. And so, we expressed to our legislators the needs within our school division. Ms. Hodges and later on, Dr. Gibbs worked with our liaison with Senator McDougal's office to answer questions, provide insight, documentation to his office, and he was able to have legislation moved through the General Assembly to allocate a million dollars to us. I've provided a tentative scope of work to the Department of Education. We're anticipating receiving that money in the next couple of weeks. We're finalizing a bid process to get the engineering and program, the project management sort of specked out and hope to get started on that as quickly as possible. But, I think that will aid us in ensuring the, the health and safety of our students in our buildings is the utmost, the highest quality. It'll also, as we're removing those asbestos-containing materials, we'll be able to upgrade a lot of the finished surfaces within, especially within Thomas Hunter. So, if we, hopefully, we'll finish under budget, we'll get, I'll seek approval to then go apply that to, go to the high school and see what we can do with that. So, yeah, that's a big, a piece of good news.
Excellent.
So, again, within superintendent's information items, so the Matthews High School graduation ceremony is Saturday, May 31st at 10:00 in the Harry M. Ward Auditorium. The Thomas Hunter is celebrating their seventh graders in the promotion ceremony on Thursday, June 5th at 11:00. Matthews Elementary School is going to celebrate, do their preschool graduation on Friday, May 30th at 9:00 in the elementary cafeteria. And then, Matthews Elementary School is also celebrating fourth graders with their promotion ceremony Thursday, June 5th at 9:00 in the Matthews Elementary School cafeteria. I would just make a note for folks who are planning to come to the, the school promotion ceremonies, please have your driver's license available when you come to the door to go through the background check and screening. That process can bog down a little bit. I think you can come in advance to get pre-screened, so you can come on in, but we screen visitors who are coming into the building against the, the state registry, so you need to make sure you have your driver's license when you come in. When we have kids in the building and we have visitors in the building and you're going past the office, then you get, you get screened on a background check. So, please, come early, get pre-screened, bring your driver's license the day of, and arrive early, so you don't get stuck in the line. 8.5, employee retirement award presentation will be Tuesday, June 17th during the school board meeting, so we'll be recognizing all of our employees who are graduating into retirement and being promoted into retirement, so we'll recognize them at our June 17th meeting. And that meeting is being held at the Matthews High School Media Center. Finally, 8.6, some superintendent information items for our school board members. Listed there is the various, are the various financial reports for each school. Those are the school-based financial reports. Also is the April FY25 expenditure reports, a memo regarding summer hours, and I'm trying to remember what the cafeteria, so it's a kind of approval of the USDA donated food program within our school division. So, just, sir, information items for you all.
Any questions from members to Dr. Daniel? Thanks, Dr. Daniel.
You're welcome.
Moving on to number nine, school board informational reports, 9.1. We're going to briefly just discuss the policy committee member assignments. We were hoping to, I was hoping to assign members to that committee tonight, but Mr. Dobson is not with us. He was one of the members who expressed interest in being on that committee, along with Mr. Morgan. But, I would just say that we'll give a brief update on where we're at in the process and that we will hold on assigning the two members to that policy committee at this time. And thank you, Ms. Diggs, for offering to, as needed, pinch-hit there, but we will, we will wait and get some more information on that, yeah. But, Mrs. Hodges and I have successfully gone through the manual, along with Ms. Morgan has provided so much help in setting up the system by which we're going to track policy reviews. And our goal is to get this being worked on a regular basis, so there won't be an onslaught of policy reviews, but it will be ongoing with a tickler. It'll be a constant due diligence that the board performs on maintaining our review of our policies. So, we hope to get movement on that very, very soon. Anybody have any comments or questions about that at this time?
Just one thing, Dr. Gibbs.
Yes?
I did meet with Mrs. Morgan in the school board office and to look at the spreadsheet she has created and get some general information from her. And as I told you before, I'm willing to serve on that committee if you would like me to. I would suggest, I don't know where Mr. Dobson stands at the moment, but I would suggest that we do have two members, two people in that committee, because some of those policies, I would feel much better if we had two separate pairs of eyes.
Absolutely, and that is per policy, that there are two members and others as needed, but not members, but other people from the school board office.
Right, okay.
You have that at your leisure, but definitely two members.
Okay, sounds good.
Create the committee. Thank you. And thank you for offering to, to assist with that. Item 9.2, we have a first review of the VSB policy updates for May. And so, these are the red lines, so they're quite a few. Does anybody have any comments? We're not voting on anything, but we're just reviewing. We'll continue to review those, and we will see those in our packet next month.
Excuse me, did you say we would vote on them next month? Is that what I understood?
I believe we will be voting next month.
Okay, thank you.
Item 9.3, the school board conferences and webinars, past and future. Again, taking a look at our due dates of our required trainings for, for COYA, FOYA, and any Title IX, and additional availability of workshops noted there. Of course, there are other entities that provide high-quality education for school board members, and we, we are mandated to take high-quality school board trainings. Any comments or questions?
I do have a question. Just make sure I'm understanding this correctly. Under the Title IX, it would appear that we all need to take this again because it's recommended annually? Is that what, okay, I just want to make sure, okay?
Confirm that, Ms. Morgan?
It's recommended.
Training is recommended, it's recommended yearly on Title IX.
It depends on what the training is, if I have, if you have already taken it. It's the same thing, I might as well take it again.
That's what I thought, and it's.
Okay.
Okay.
Refresh.
A refresher, or if there's been change in the policy, then we would need to take that, that new training.
Yes.
Absolutely.
I'm not sure we need it annually.
Item 9.4, board and committee reports by school board members and the superintendent. And first, let me just cover that we have all of the Board of Supervisors meetings are covered, so we are good through the end of the year on that. And I believe Ms., Mrs. Hodges, you wanted to speak or give an update on CBGS?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I want to thank you, Dr. Gibbs, for attending the Board of Supervisors in my stead last week.
My pleasure.
Chesapeake Bay Governor's School, the executive, the director is leaving at the end of this year. He's given notice, Dr. Strong. We had a new director hired, well, was offered a position, she accepted it, but then it later, apparently, another offer came in. So, as far as I know, we do not have a director. I know they, they were supposed to, they had a meeting the other day, which I was not able to attend, but I've not seen any email that said they have hired someone.
I've not seen an email either, like announcing the next. I think they had two finalists, two or three finalists, and so, I don't know that if subsequent interviews have been held. if subsequent interviews have been held and, and a decision point has been made yet.
Right, yeah, so at the end of this school year, there will not be a, anybody heading the governor's school. So hopefully, we'll be able to get someone in that place soon.
Yeah, I would expect it shortly, though. My understanding, last Thursday, at our regional superintendent's meeting, was that it was, I, I think this week, there were, there was to-be movement on that decision this week.
Yes, yes. And regarding the regional special education meetings, I believe Mr. Dobson is a, is a member there, and Ms. Diggs, you are not, correct? You are not a member or an observer to the regional special education meetings?
No.
No, it's Mr. Dobson, and he is not able to give a report on that. But I will just say, for HARETTA and for CLEO, HARETTA being the Hampton Roads Educational Telecommunications Association, which oversees the WHRO, that meeting is tomorrow, so no immediate update there. But as far as the CLEO, the Chief Local Elected Officials Meeting, that organization, which I serve as a member-at-large and the liaison to the workforce, the Bay Consortium workforce, that organization, a point came up, and, and just so you know, I'm the only school board member as a, as an elected official. Others are mostly Board of Supervisor members. But I did not know that when I was asked to be the member-at-large, there's a succession on that after two years. There's a succession to the next level, which is vice chair of that, that board. So I will be probably, I will continue that, but I will probably be looking for a replacement for my HARETTA participation, so, and so that someone else can get that, that experience. But regarding CLEO, something came up specific to schools, and I think everybody is pretty familiar with Mr. Giles Scott. He is the, he's the, performs the youth component for the consortium and for, for workforce, and he has worked with the high school quite a bit and provides the virtual, occupational virtual training things, it's very big. Well, his job is, is potentially, theoretically could be eliminated. And so what the executive director asked me was to float with our board, and she's going to be asking many other boards in our region if there would be, if we could see our way clear to sharing the cost of Giles Scott. He has been so beneficial to our division, and we really have gotten a lot of help from him. And I told her I would float that out to the members and to the superintendent, and just to, she's just at the beginning stages. Nothing has happened yet, but in anticipation with the budget reductions that they're facing, the youth program is the one that will be first affected. So just something to think about, something we can talk about. But I do feel strongly that Giles Scott is an asset to our division and has made a difference. Dr. Graves is here and shaking his head, and, and I know Mrs. Dodge is also very involved with Giles, and he, they are really helpful during the career fair and, and various other things for our kids, for future occupation. So something to think about, think out of the box on this one, if the way we could retain him, along with the support of five or six other school divisions sharing, sharing that cost. I have no details about what that would be at this point, but it's the concept.
Um, first of all, I, I think he called himself influencer, didn't he? Is that the term of the, at least initially?
I think so.
So I thought, I thought CLEO was, like, from Fredericksburg to Eastern Shore, so, which is more than five or six. So is she, is she, are they thinking about just concentrating on five or six school divisions and not including the other ones? Is that what you're?
I did not know what her rationale was there, and she seemed to be keen on the five or six, and I'm like, well, why not spread? I, I don't know what the vision is yet. I think she is just trying to be creative and anticipate this loss.
Is, was it federal money? Is that what it was? It was?
Yes. Yes. Thank you for indulging me to explain that situation a little bit.
No, very helpful information.
Okay.
I appreciate you giving us an update on that.
Great, yes. I really enjoy that, being part of that and that group. Item 9.5, our next regular school board monthly meeting will be Tuesday, June 17th at 6:00 PM at the Matthews High School Media Center, because that is primary, or, yeah, that is primary voting date. So we have had a location change, everybody, please note that. And item 9.6, we have an upcoming summer work session, which is Wednesday, June 25th, from 8:00 to 3:00, at the Chesapeake Bank Community Room. And moving on to item 10, action items. We have a few items here tonight. Item 10.1, seeking the approval of the amended, adopted 2025-2026 school budget. May I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the amended, adopted 2025-2026 school budget as listed.
Well, thank you, Ms. Diggs. Do we have a second? Any discussion?
I mean, I feel like we have fiscal limitations, clearly, and that we're living within those limitations. And thinking about this over the last several weeks, it just, it seems like whenever we have, have to reduce our budget, it's always teacher salaries. That is where we reduce it. We keep, we've kept the programs going, that's great. I'm just saddened that teachers are the ones, and faculty are the ones, and staff are the ones that take the hit. But we have to live within our limitations, so.
Well, and yet, I was going to applaud the efforts of the school board office for really doing something unique and looking at things creatively with those increases and trying to maintain our competitive edge with our teachers specifically and make other adjustments to accommodate, to allow for that. So I know untold hours went into these adjustments, and the finesse with which this amended budget was kind of carved out and put, and put together. You know, we have, we have to live within our means, and we will continue to have an eye towards efficiencies going forward. And that is just, that is the way of the world, that is, that is the way of the division. And, yes. Okay. Item 10.2, nope, need to take a vote? Oh, yes. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Item 10.2, looking for the, a motion for the approval of authorization of signature in the absence of the division superintendent, may I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the authorization of signature for Leslie R. Hunley, Assistant Superintendent to sign all the Virginia Department of Education reports, documents, requisitions, and other official correspondence in the absence of the division superintendent from July 1st, 2025 until June 30th, 2026, as listed.
Thank you, Mrs. Hodges. Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? I have a question regarding this. I want to clarify that any contracts that would require signature would not be included in this action, correct? No?
Yeah, I don't think so.
Depends on the situation.
Yeah, I guess.
If you're out for a long term and the board directs, then I would need to sign.
Yeah. So I think there wouldn't be signature without conversation. So if there was, you know, a pending contract, we're all aware of, of what's going on and something untold happens, like a car accident may befall the superintendent on his way to work. As happened, there's a hypothetical joke, I was in a car accident last week. So that, that could happen, and so that, you know, there may be a timeframe where that, that would need to be, that would need to take place, yeah.
Okay, but it is not specifically written into the recommended action?
Reports, documents, recommended, and other.
Other official correspondence, it's correspondence, so.
Official correspondence, but is that construed as contract?
Reports, documents, requisitions.
This is mainly for the Department of State.
Okay, okay. Okay. Do we have a provision for the signing of contracts in the absence of the superintendent?
I don't know. I don't know if we have that policy, I don't know if we have that in policy or not.
Okay.
We need to look at that.
And we'll add it to the list for some reception.
It's a good call.
All right. Any more, any more discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Item 10.3, I'm looking for a motion for the approval of the 2025 to 2030 local plan for the education of the gifted. Have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the 2025 through 2030 local plan for the education of the gifted as written.
We have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Just to extend our thanks to Ms. Gray for developing this.
And there, there just seems like we're very minor changes reflected in your memo, so it's a very lengthy plan, and thank you for your work on that. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Item 10.4, the adoption of textbooks for grades three through five, science for 2025-2026, may I have a motion?
I make a motion to adopt the textbooks for grades three through five, science for 2025-2026, as listed.
Thank you, Ms. Diggs. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I wanted to make a comment that I really appreciate all of the hard work that it takes to set that up, the coordinating of it, Ms. Hunley, and then the execution of it by the schools, to have the materials out for people to review. I appreciate the process, and I'm, I'm grateful to have it and was pleased with what I saw with the textbooks that are up for adoption. Need more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Item 10.5, I'm looking for a motion for the adoption of textbooks for family and consumer sciences for 2025-2026, may I have a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we approve or adopt the textbooks for family and consumer sciences for 2025-2026.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ditto my previous comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item 10.6, I'm looking for a motion to approve the out-of-county tuition waivers requested by school employees for 2025-2026.
I make a motion to approve the out-of-county tuition waivers requested by school employees for 2025-2026, as listed.
Thank you, Mrs. Hodges. Do we have a second?
I certainly do.
Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, board. Moving on to item 11, citizens' comments on items discussed during the meeting. Do we have anybody who would like to approach the podium?
Good evening. My name is Kelly Lockerbie. I live here in Matthews County. I was confused by one thing. I was at the last meeting where it was proposed, the amendments to the budget, and then I was at the joint meeting with the supervisors where it was discussed. And so I was waiting to find out where it got voted on, and so it appears that you guys just voted on the amendment, so I was confused by how we were able to enter into contracts with people if it wasn't voted on, what, that we were amending the budget that was previously voted on.
Would you like to discuss the issuance of contracts being post-vote?
I guess it depends on what contract, so. So just in terms of employee contracts are issued, will be issued tomorrow after the budget is, and I don't know if you're referring to employee contracts or contracts with companies.
The companies, the subcontractors for the custodians and the substitutes.
Mm-hmm, okay. It's part of the proposed, I mean, we would, we know what our funding is going to, to be, and so we can still engage in contracts across fiscal years.
Perhaps if more research is needed or discussion would be had outside?
I mean, we did approve a budget in February.
Yes, it was a budget approved in February. But if they, if, if that, you may need to follow up, and if you need to follow up, follow up. Would anyone else like to approach the podium?
Richard Hicks, North Virginia. I don't believe this was discussed during the meeting, but it's still cold in here. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Hicks. Would anyone else like to approach the podium? All right. School board comments. Members have any comments tonight?
I would like to personally thank, as a board member, personally thank the board, but particularly Dr. Daniels, Dr. Gibbs, and Ms. Hodges for your work, Leslie Hunley, Ms. Lau, all of you all who have worked so hard on this, because I can see that, and I just want to personally thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Diggs.
Sure.
Mr. Morgan, any comments tonight?
No, no, thanks.
I mean, I feel like, I'm reiterating somewhat of what both of you, both my colleagues have said, but I'm not sure the public is aware of, of the immense amount of additional work by the school board office in, in this budget process and trying to come up with a variety of presentations to the public and to the Board of Supervisors. It was an immense amount of work that I know many weekends were spent by many people trying to, trying to pull this together, and it, it is greatly appreciated, and for the benefit of our students.
That's right. Agreed, very much appreciated. Right. Item 14, other business by the school board members or superintendent, 14.1. We will have a school board closed meeting Tuesday, June 17th, 2025. We would like to start that closed at 4:00 PM. That will request a change, will be a 4:00 PM start on the closed meeting, not 5:00, and that will be at the Matthews, Matthews High School Conference Room. Item 14.2, next regular monthly meeting will be Tuesday, June 17th at 6:00 PM at the media center at the high school. And please note that is, again, a location change. Will not be here, it will be at the high school because of voting. Item 14.3, again, our summer work session, the school board summer work session will be June 25th, 8:00 to 3:00, in the Chesapeake Bank Community Room. And finally, item 14.4, the end-of-year special meeting will be Monday, June 30th, 2025, at 9:00 AM in the Jay Marie Brooks Auditorium here at Thomas Hunter Middle School. There being none, no more information, no more comments by anyone? Just a final farewell to Ms. Jiang. Thank you for staying for our entire meeting. You did great. Big shoes to fill.
Yes.
And tonight's meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all.